Merrill, would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and ever being in justice for all.
All right. Thank you Merrill. Carol, will you perform roll call please?
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Mayor Cartwright?
Here.
Next we will do the adoption of the agenda. Council will typically adopt the agenda in the order listed or modified in order to or in a way that can best accommodate people in attendance who wish to speak upon agenda items. Speakers are requested to restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute timeframe. The mayor has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I second it.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye.
Wes, as far as proclamations and announcements, recognitions, is there any that I'm unaware of?
Nothing I'm aware of. There is, under the consent, we have the extra mile recognition of the volunteers in the community that is on there. Next month we'll have an item underneath recognition but not this month.
Okay, well, thank you. I always want to check because, you know, I don't want to miss out on anything. Okay, now we'll move to matters of interest for council members. David?
So, many of us up here attended a conference this past month in Sacramento for a city and town. And managers, is it a phone? I've never heard that one ring.
I have.
Is the what? And we hung up on them? One of the workshops that I attended was on the proliferation of hate speech across the nation. I was surprised to learn that in many California communities, council meetings are being inundated with public comments by phone and on Zoom from people across the country who are calling in just to espouse their hate. In fact, this happened just last week in the city of Colfax. Luckily, we haven't had seen the extent of hate speech in Loomis that other communities have seen. However, considering the comments made by some council and community members in the past, and frankly even the fact that I'm bringing this up right now, we are essentially inviting that type of speech into our town meetings. Some communities are discussing ending the use of Zoom at meetings altogether. Personally, I think the Zoom participation thus far has been great for our community and I would love to see it continue. But I think the town needs to take a proactive step to minimize this as much as possible before it becomes a problem. I think the first step would be to have a discussion on the types of speech that aren't protected under the First Amendment. I don't know, is it possible that we can add that to our discussion of the Brown Act on Thursday at all? Is it too long already?
I bet I'll turn to Wes on how long it is.
It should be, we're hoping that it will be out there within two hours. The meeting starts at six, I'm hoping it's over by eight. And I'm sure we could come up with something by then to kind of share with the council as part of the appointment.
Because at the Colfax meeting, it was, there was a lot that seemed like it shouldn't have been protected, but at the same time, I mean, they were making threats. And I feel like that's not allowed, but they let it go because of, they were worried about the First Amendment, but I think that that's something that we should know in advance. If somebody's going to call up and start threatening people, we should be like, no, we can cut that off.
I can't promise to be ready to give you a trace of the First Amendment law, but we can talk generally.
Okay, thank you. I've said this in the past, but there are issues in our community that will never be resolved at council meetings. I am a firm believer in that an open and honest conversation is a great start. We need to start talking with one another and not just at one another. In light of this, I am going to make myself personally available on the first Saturday of every month from 10:00 to noon. We're going to start at the, in the conference room in, at, in the train station. Feel free to come by and talk to me about anything you want in the town that's bothering you. I will do what I can to help. If it turns out that no one shows up on Saturdays, then we'll move it to another day if that's not the right time. As always, you are welcome to email me or I'm assuming any one of us with any of your problems, our email addresses are on the town website. Thanks.
Ken, are we having technical difficulties? Okay. Anyone else have matters of interest? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say that I thought that the Lego Cities Conference was very informative and I really am appreciative to be able to go and go to those different segments, sessions. And again, I think it was very valuable. Thank you.
I just have one thought to add to David's comment, and I remember there was a stand-up comedian years ago, I think it's Gallagher is his name, and he had a skit about the seven words that you can't say. Oh, George Carlin, okay, George Carlin, okay. And that, I just thought it was part of the skit, and then I ended up being interviewed on a radio show, this is years ago, and when I walked into the studio, there was seven words. It's legit, it's FCC. So I think perhaps as far as our meeting goes, you know, in respect of the First Amendment, I think, you know, people can say what's on their mind, but I think if we use those FCC guidelines, that's just a starting point, you know, not allowing vulgarity, then that doesn't hamper their speech, but it makes the meeting, it keeps the decorum of the meeting. And so, we can always discuss that in detail later, but I think just as a thought, that's a good foundational place to start from. And so, I'm sure we'll talk about that more in our Brown Act meeting. With that, we will move on to Town Manager's Report. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items I want to highlight from my report. First, the Finance Director position recruitment closed on October 8th. We received two applications that were mostly qualified. We interviewed one today, we'll look to interview the second one next week, and then see if there's some opportunity for the onboard somebody from one of those interviews. If we're not successful in doing so, we'll need to continue using ED Bailey services until we can find somebody that can fill that role. We've gotten creative, we're looking at somebody that's maybe eighty, ninety percent qualified and using supplemental services to mentor them up to the position, but at some point we may need to revisit compensation and other things, but staff at this time is hopeful that we'll be able to move forward and get somebody onboard. UC Master Gardeners did a groundbreaking ceremony on September 19th in Saricom Stock, and Jenny Nysley did an amazing job kind of representing the community at that event. It was very well attended, and if you haven't been over there lately, you can see the turf's all removed. They have a great foundation laid out of what that's going to look like in the future. Costco is still planning to open in early spring at this point. And the WWE Mollings property, I want to highlight this a little bit because it's an item of interest I'm asked often when I talk to the public, is what's going on with that property and what process the town's in at this point. So we had an adjacent property owner to the east of the town's property request a property line boundary survey to ensure the potential buyers were aware of the easternly property line. Staff worked with the town survey or conducted a survey. Subsequently, the eastern boundary was disclosed to the adjacent property owner and the prospective developers. We've actually shared the shape files to the first of the three different developers we need to negotiate or need the Surquest Land Act to give them kind of a, what that boundary is between High Hand and our property, different two feet on there, so they have a clear understanding. Scott Miles, the adjacent property owner of High Hand, was, he was in agreement with what our boundary line was that we were able to determine in there. So now we're moving forward with the exclusive negotiating agreement with the first of three high-density, low-income developers as required on the Surquest Land Act before we can do anything else about property. So at that point, I'm not sure, I think we may have that contract executed. It triggers a sixty-day compliance process where in which we, they have to actively negotiate or otherwise we just move on to the next one there. So we're hopeful we'll get through the first one of these developers within by, sort of the start of the new year, so we can see how that process is going to work and what comes of it to the next developer we need to negotiate in the near. So probably early spring or so, maybe we'll have gone through all of that actions to see what we can do, whether or not we're able to execute an agreement with them or if we have the opportunity to seek other opportunities for that. And as Councilmember Ring alluded to, we have the Public Policy and Brown Act training. It's a workshop, it's Friday, October 13th at 16:00 p.m. here at the Train Depot. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Wes. Next, we'll move to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report. Sarah?
All right, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to go over some of the fun things that we're doing in October because as always, we have a lot of fun events coming up. Starting with our regular storytime, of course, is every Friday at 10:30, and Japanese storytime every Wednesday at 10:30. On October 14th, the UC Master Gardeners will be doing a workshop on urban forestry, that's also at 10:30. And then also on the 14th, our Manga Club will be meeting, that's for the tweens, at 3:30. On October 17th, we will be having Spice Club, and they will be doing Persia this month, so it should be some good food. And then on October 21st, our Lego Club will have a Halloween theme, that's also going to be at 10:30. And then our Friends of the Library will be having a week-long book sale from October 24th through the 28th during library hours, so you can come in and pick up some used books. On October 28th, that Saturday, we of course will be having our Read to a Dog program at 10:30. And then also that day, we will be having a special Halloween-themed walk-through of books, so there'll be an activity to do, it'll be Pete the Cat themed, and lots of fun things for the little ones to do, and we encourage everyone to come in costume to that. On November 1st, we're going to have a new tea of the month. The last month was very successful, and October's tea, we still have some left, but they're going, they're going fast, so if you're interested, head into the library and pick that up before they're gone. And then finally, on Oct., on, I'm sorry, November 3rd, we will be having a Teddy Bear Sleepover, that's where kids can bring the, a stuffed animal to the library for a special storytime after the library's closed at 5:00 p.m. We'll do a special storytime, they get to leave their stuffed animal at the library, the kids go home, and then the next day they can come pick up their stuffy and hear about all the shenanigans that the stuffed animals get into while the library was closed. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Sarah. Now we'll hear the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. I believe that's Katie.
I'm going to bring my mug with me, isn't that cute? We had nothing going on last weekend, so I don't know why I need to be up here. I want to thank everybody in this room and our community for their support in our 36th Annual Loomis Eggplant Festival. It was a really great event on Saturday. It was quite warm, but that means everybody enjoyed the desserts and the drinks and the shaved ice, but the community came out in spades. It was amazing, it was an amazing weekend. I hope that you guys got to see the seventy-foot American flag waving over the Train Depot, it was pretty magical for our town. I live two miles away, and from my home looking to downtown Loomis, all you could see was green trees and the American flag, so it was really cool. The Chamber needs a little bit of rest, but we have, are excited about new businesses that are opening in Loomis, including the Blue Ox, I'm wearing the hat, that just opened within the last month here in downtown Loomis, which is bringing new people and products to our town, which is exciting. And we also had a grand opening for Faith Love Therapy, which is a salon that already existed, but just opened a med spa section, and that's on Taylor Road across from High Hand Nursery. And so, we welcomed them to the Chamber and another great business in Loomis. So it's hard for me to think past last Saturday, but what we have going on next is we have a mixer on Thursday, the 19th, and that's going to be at Steel Insurance, right up here in the Blue Goose Fruit Sheds, and that's on Thursday, the 19th at 5:30. And then we always have our Coffee Connection, which will be the first Thursday of the month here at the Train Depot, and you guys can all come join us. We have great updates and good programming and time for networking between the businesses. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Katie. Katie, I think we have a comment from Jenny?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just really wanted to thank the Chamber and all the volunteers and all the businesses that came together to make that happen, because I know it was on, you know, on the fence for a while, and it just really did an amazing job in to keep that purpose of attracting visitors to here and to bring awareness to our community. I just thank you.
It was my job and a pleasure to do it. Thank you, everyone.
Can I just tack on to that?
Sure, go ahead.
After I left, I went to Panera, and there were people at Panera talking about it.
Oh, that's funny.
So I was like, and I was still wearing my shirt. So they were talking, and I said, hey, that was what I was just talking about. Did you go? Did you buy stuff? And they said, yeah, great.
Well, since you're still standing here, I just want to say that I heard from several people, some that were vendors, some that were just visiting, that they loved the vibe this year, that they loved the location of it, they thought it was, it just brought a good streamline and a great vibe, and so, and then I personally walked around with you, and I just really wanted to commend all your personal relationships and how hard you work at bringing the community together. And the vendor, you rock, Katie, we're really lucky to have you. Am I allowed to go sit down there?
Yeah. Thank you, Katie. Next, we'll hear from our Partner Agencies update, and I know that we have Deputy Jeff Billado here.
How's that? Yeah, all right. Good evening, everybody. How's everyone doing? Good. All right. So I'll start with the data first, and then I got a couple of topics to cover. So obviously you can see now, we're kind of video of the screen here, number-related incidents is 278 total for the month of September in Loomis. Reports taken, thirty-five. Transit-related calls, three. All right, so we still have the breakdown from citizen calls to deputy-initiated activity. The citizen calls still outweigh, but it's, it's pretty darn close there. Our pie next to that is our priority level citizen calls, still between the priority three and priority four calls, which is, you know, fairly low priority, between thirty-four and thirty-one percent. Our incident disposition calls, four arrests for the, for the month of September, assist other agencies, twenty-one, citations, twenty-two for the, for September, contacts with no crime, one hundred and fifty-six, which makes sense for the town of Loomis, false alarms, eight. So suspicious activity calls, nineteen, disturbance calls, thirteen, alarm calls, eighteen, and traffic stops, sixty-eight. So I'm trying my best to bring that number up. So, so what we've, what we've had going on, I'll just kind of cover for the Sheriff's Office, the Eggplant Festival, thank you, Katie, was a huge success. I think from the Sheriff's Office or a law enforcement standpoint, we always make sure that we cover our bases when it comes to any type of security at a large event like that. We made sure that we had staffing there to make sure that the event felt safe, and that's not just from people walking in, but from motorists, so we made sure that we worked with the town to make sure that roadways were closed and blocked. I made sure personally that there wasn't any avenues where a car would be confused and drive into, into the event. Secondly, the day before that, which was a very, very busy weekend, I can agree with Katie, if I'm getting some rest, was the Homecoming Parade and Homecoming Game for Delaware High School. Once again, my first Homecoming Parade, I'm running it, running as the operation, we had a total of, I believe, ten or eleven staff that worked the event to make sure that it was a safe, well-run event in diverting traffic, but also making sure that the town came out, felt safe, and I think it was a big hit. And we had partners with our, with our fire department running there too. So good event, more to come with parades, Fan Spectacles coming up, Thanksgiving parades coming up. We also have a 5K running through town where we'll be shutting down roadways, so I hope everyone feels comfortable with, with being, traffic being diverted. Also, speaking of diverting traffic, I want to give a big pat on the back to the town of Loomis for the resurfacing project. I know probably Merrill will end up talking about it, but with the amount of roadways that we covered, and I say we because I feel like I'm invested in this, is that we covered a lot of area, and mainly residential area, that had a lot of cars on the streets, and for the most part, I would say we were ninety-nine point nine percent, all the citizens did a great job of being on top of it, moving their car, and not having to make us have to tow their car. So a huge hats off, sort of tip to the hat to the, to the residents of Loomis, so good job with that. So last two things are things for the Sheriff's Department, if you see the Sheriff's Office wearing... Pink patches. So the month of October, we're authorized to wear pink patches on our uniform, it's in support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I personally have my uniform that I wear for the month of October, so it's important to us. So I know some, a lot of people come up and ask, I figured I'd cover it in a meeting to make sure everyone's aware of why we're wearing those patches and why it's important for us. Secondly, or lastly, I should say, we've been wearing morning bands for almost a month straight now. We've had two officers die in the line of duty within a few weeks of each other, the latest was, was from down south, was struck on his motorcycle. So if you wonder why officers, deputies, we wear a black style band over our badge, it's to show support for the fallen officer, so that's why we're wearing that. Just wanted to give everyone the update on everything that's going on. If there are any questions, please fire away, I'm ready.
Awesome job.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I attended both the parade and the Eggplant Festival, and at no point in either of those times was I thinking about safety, which means you guys did a great job.
Fantastic.
Because that's exactly the way it should be. Is there a way that we can get that printed out?
This patch?
Yeah.
You can actually purchase those?
Not the patch, the, the, the data.
Oh, the data.
Print it out beforehand, or at least for the...
Your graphs and charts.
Graphs and charts. I got you, I got you.
Not right now, but like for the next meeting?
Yes, I can work on that.
Okay.
Me ask if that's okay for, I'm assuming it's public information, so...
That was the question.
So printing it out probably wouldn't be a problem.
That's typified too, if you can put it on a PowerPoint, that's, if it's easier.
Yeah.
It's just some of this is not as hard to read.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go there.
Awesome, great job.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Well, you can buy one. There you go. I see Chief Dewar in the audience.
Mayor Cartwright, council staff, everybody. Thanks for having us, thanks for giving us some time. I'll cover real quickly a couple of statistics for the district and the community, and then we'll talk about some important things going on as well. Three hundred and nine total responses for the fire district, ninety-eight responses in the town of Loomis. Fifty-seven of those are EMS, two fires which were mutual aid, and twenty-seven other calls helping people up, assisting the public, those kinds of things. The ninetieth percentile, so nine times out of ten, from the time you pick up the phone until we arrive at your house, is right at eight minutes. So that's a good time, we're working to continue to improve, we'd like to see it right in the seven-minute range, so we're close. I'd like to thank Katie and everybody involved for the pancake, or for the Eggplant Festival. We had a pancake breakfast before, which turned out to be super successful. The town showed up, it was phenomenal, busiest it's ever been, super excited. We also want to remind you that before your next meeting, we'll be turning the clocks back, and when you turn your clocks back, we would really appreciate it if you changed the batteries in your detectors. Some of you may not have to do that, they may be wired into your house, but just as a reminder for fire safety, that'd be great. And the final thing is, Cal Fire will be lifting the burn ban on Friday, October 13th, and we will follow suit with that. It will be permit required until probably a little more rain like we're having today, but we'll be able to burn, check with air pollution control, and pull, pull a permit with the fire district.
our, our, um, badge, it's to, um, show support for, for the fallen officer. So that's, that's why we're wearing that. Just wanted to give everyone the update on everything that's going on. If there are any questions, please fire away. I'm ready.
Awesome job.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I attended both the parade and the eggplant festival and at no point in either of those times was I thinking about safety, which means you guys did a great job.
Fantastic.
That's exactly the way it should be.
It should be.
Is there a way that we can get that printed out?
This patch?
Yeah.
You can actually purchase those?
The, the, the data.
Oh, the data.
Printed out beforehand, or at least for the...
Your graphs and charts.
Graphs and charts. I got you, I got you, um...
Not right now, but like for the next meeting?
Yes, I can work on that.
Okay.
Me ask if that, that's okay for, I'm assuming it's public information, so...
That was the question.
So printing it out probably wouldn't be a problem.
That's typified too, if you can put it on a PowerPoint, that's, if it's easier.
Yeah.
It's just some of this is not as hard to read.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go.
Awesome, great job.
Alright, thank you everybody.
Thank you. Well, you can buy one. I see Chief Dewar in the audience.
Carter, council staff, everybody, uh, thanks for having us, thanks for giving us some time. I'll cover real quickly a couple of statistics for the district and the community, and then we'll talk about some important things going on as well. Three hundred and nine total responses for the fire district, ninety-eight responses in the town of Loomis. Fifty-seven of those are EMS, two fires which were mutual aid and twenty-seven other calls helping people up, assisting the public, those kinds of things. The ninetieth percentile, so nine times out of ten, from the time you pick up the phone until we arrive at your house, is right at eight minutes. So that's a, a good time, we're working to continue to improve. We'd like to see it right in the seven minute range, so we're close. I'd like to thank Katie and everybody involved for the pancake, or for the eggplant festival. We had a pancake breakfast before, which turned out to be super successful. The town showed up, it was phenomenal, busiest it's ever been, super excited. We also want to remind you that before your next meeting, we'll be turning the clocks back, and when you turn your clocks back, we would really appreciate it if you changed the batteries in your detectors. Some of you may not have to do that, they may be wired into your house, but just as a reminder for fire safety, that'd be great. And the final thing is, um, Cal Fire will be lifting the burn ban on Friday, October thirteenth, and we will follow suit with that. It will be permit required until, um, probably a little more rain like we're having today, but we'll be able to burn, check with air pollution control and, uh, pull, pull a permit with the fire district if you're going to choose to burn, and we'll give you all the information for that. You can either find it online or come over to our station at sixty-nine hundred Ugrica Road, or you can stop here at Station Eighteen and find one there as well. That'll answer any questions you might have. Fantastic.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Now we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. The council may refer your concerns raised during public comment to staff or place on future agendas. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comment on any item on the agenda at the time that that item is heard. The time allotted is three minutes and to know where you're at during public comment, we have not only the timer on the front of the dais, we also have the three colored lights, uh, red, what is it, red, yellow, green? So green of course is, you know, plenty of time, yellow would indicate that your time is shortening, I believe it's thirty to forty-five seconds remaining, and of course red would be the indicator that your time is up. Everything operational Carol? Okay, excellent. So let's open the meeting up for public comment for items not on the agenda.
Jean Wilson, a very brief comment. I wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Jenny Nysley, in case you have anything that you'd like to tell them why you're celebrating today.
Uh, I had a grandson born this morning, um, and Graham, uh, Michael Clay, seven pounds fifteen ounces, so thank you Jean.
Hi, I'm Mindy Chadwick, and, um, I am on the Loomis Community School Board, and I'm also representing a bunch of other moms who could not be here tonight, and I'm here to talk about the library specifically. But first, let me say that the library usually has really great programs, and we just heard her say like really great things that happened in the town of Loomis, but I was really disappointed in the banned book week that they just had at the library and the books that were listed there that were directed towards children, towards teen. It was not appropriate content. Some of us went to the library, we looked at the books, and I'm going to highlight one of the books that is in the children's section that is next to the toys and the puzzles. It is a book by Alex Gino, it's called George, and it features a transgender girl in fourth grade, pornography is discussed in the book, Melissa's in a bath and she references, um, her penis, um, it is also, uh, let me get it back here, and that in the book that, that, um, they talk about pronouns and that most disturbing to me is that the older brother shows him how to clear the browsing history on their mother's computer so that they can hide it from the parents. This should not be in a children's section. These books should be in appropriate sections. If you're going to have these books in the library, they need to be in appropriate section of the library, um, in adult section. And I would ask the board, the town of, the board, the town of Loomis here, to please look at these books, move them to an appropriate section to where a little child cannot just walk up, open this book and have the parents, so the parents can be involved. If they want to discuss these items with these, with their children, then great, then they have the choice to do that. It should not just be something that is in, inappropriate section of the library. So I'm asking you to please look at your policies, see what we can do to move these books to appropriate sections of our library. Our kids, I, I want to protect our kids. It's the reason why I'm on the school board, is that I'm a mom in this community, and I want my kids to be able to go to the library and be able to find appropriate books. So I'm asking you to please look into this, see if you, what you can do about moving these books to more appropriate sections. There are more books, but I'm out of time, so please, I'm just asking you to, um, look into that and see what you can do about moving these to an appropriate section. Thank you.
On that note Wes, we had some discussion about this, would you care to share, uh, some thoughts and what we had talked about? Correct.
Statement for the public on here is that the town of Loomis was made aware of the promotion of the annual American Libraries Association's Most Challenged Books Activity in the Loomis Library and Community Center. It might be viewed by some as contentious. Based on this feedback from the community, the town of Loomis staff has elected to remove the Most Challenged Book publication, will not highlight, will not highlight the Loomis Library books that are on the list of two thousand five hundred and seventy-one banned books identified by the American Libraries Association. The Loomis Library and Community Center objective is to meet the needs of all patrons through their collaborative efforts, as identified in the department's policy manual, collection and development section, the guidance of the library's materials. A key factor in this question and development policy is to provide materials in the collection that meets the needs of all the library's patrons. Moving forward, the town of Loomis staff will take into consideration the sensitivity nature of the promotional items prior to issuing out the materials. The goal of this effort is to stay neutral on the social norms of the region, focusing on fulfillment of the Loomis Library, Community Centers patrons. So we just want to, you know, kind of, the goal here is to keep, keep it in a environment right, we want to make sure everybody feels welcome and that's kind of what it is. And, and I, and I have to say, I, I don't think that there was any malicious intent in, in what was done and stuff, but we do recognize that some people are sensitive to some information that we put out there, so we're just trying to refrain from putting out information that may be offensive.
Thank you for clarifying that, I'm sure many will find that comforting. And we are still open for a public comment. Carol, do we have any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, thank you.
Okay, then seeing none and hearing no further comment, then we will close public comment. And now we'll move to the opportunity to comment on consent calendar. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion unless an audience member or a council member request otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Does anyone have an item on the consent agenda that they would like pulled? David?
Can I pull number eleven please?
Alright, number eleven will be pulled. And then with that, do I have a, is there any other, well, let me open it up one more time, do we have any other items that anyone wants to pull? Alright, then may I have a motion to adopt the agenda item, items one through ten?
I have two of those, that's one through ten. And, oh, sorry, join me, I have one of those.
One through ten and twelve? No?
Twelve's business.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye. David, item eleven please.
So for the public safety appointment, I just felt it was important for the community to know who it was that we were actually appointing. I didn't feel like it was a good idea to pass this on the consent agenda. Uh, I think the, the committee's a great idea, I think the two of you will do fabulous, I just wanted to let everybody know that you were the ones doing it, uh, otherwise I'm totally for it, so.
Okay, so for clarification, uh, the new committee formed, the Public Safety Committee, the two council members that are appointed to attend that meeting are Councilmember Youngblood and Councilmember Cortez. And so they'll be working with our, uh, agency partners in a, in a safety aspect, uh, as items come up and need addressing in that manner. So now we need a motion to, uh, approve item number eleven. Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, I was just, uh, so we will open for public comment for, uh, item eleven. Seeing none, hearing none, Zoom? Okay.
No hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Sure?
Hi, my name's Dave Dally. It says Public Safety Committee Appointment, don't you think somebody from out here should be on that committee, since we are the public?
Well, um, you can be.
Not saying me, I'm just saying, don't you think somebody, somebody from...
But, but you can be, anyone from the public can be, but they have to be elected.
Okay.
And that was cheeky, that was cheeky, I know, but...
No, I didn't, I didn't understand, I thought that anybody could sign...
So I think, I think what, what you're speaking to Mr. Dally is that the, the nomenclature here, in that it says public safety, so that connotes from the general public. But what the committee is formed to address are public safety concerns, and so it's, it's for appointed elected officials to interact in concert with our agency partners such as the fire department and Office of Emergency Services or, uh, Placer County Sheriff, so on and so forth.
Okay, so something like that, oh, okay, alright, thank you, thank you for...
No problem.
And you're welcome to attend all of those meetings as, as often as you want.
We have a motion to adopt item eleven?
Close, close public comment.
You are on...
I'm sorry!
You should be married, because obviously I'm blowing it.
You're doing great!
And so we will close, close public comment on item eleven, and, uh, do I have a motion to adopt item eleven?
Now I would like to move that we adopt item eleven.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye. Item twelve is under the business, uh, section, it's the Needle Exchange Distribution Program, Urgency Ordnance. Wes, did you want to introduce this? Or Jeff?
Either way, um, essentially this is the same ordinance that you saw last month.
Right.
Brought it back, um, your action last month was for forty-five days, uh, and so what you've got before you now is an ordinance that will make those changes permanent. You'll notice one referral, one reference in the recitals that the matter of land use designation will be referred to the planning, staff and county commission to determine whether a change in zoning is actually needed, nor implement this, uh, the Needle Exchange is not identified as a permitted use. However, there is some room for ambiguity in that, and so I think the question would be to take a look at whether there's any zoning change that's here in this system. Otherwise, this is essentially the same ordinance.
Understand. Okay, with that, let's open up the public comment. Carol?
I have no hands raised in public comment.
Okay, so seeing none and hearing none. Council, you have any last minute questions? I could ca, I knew I could count on you David, fire away.
Okay, so, um, so the last one was, this is, this is the permanent ordinance, right? Okay, is, and it's, I couldn't, it wasn't listed in here, but it's the same as it was stated for last month? Is that correct? The ordinance is the same. Okay, uh, so in that, um, uh, so I have questions here, so let's just start there. Um, I'm not sure this is a real big issue for Loomis, I understand why we're doing it, I don't think we would have done it though if it wasn't for this one organization who was trying to, uh, open one up, or establish a, an syringe ser, uh, syringe, Needle Exchange program, um, but I don't think that Loomis should be the only community that doesn't have one, all the other communities are doing it. And so I really, I, I, I am concerned that we would be the only one if, if we didn't approve this. However, I do want to state, uh, that in general, the science behind these programs is clear that they are a net positive for the community, um, if they're well-run. And I think that this organization, as much as I've read up on them, is not the right one, but I think it's unfortunate that the reaction by the county is that it was a, we're just going to ban all of them and have no discussion on it ever again, and I think that that's the wrong approach. But again, this one, in this case, I, I think that for Loomis, the best thing for Loomis, I think would be to, you know, to, to pass this. However, saying that, um, I am still concerned about the fact that it does appear that we are banning the participation in these syringe services programs. Is that, is that, am I reading that correct? That is still language in... From the general public, yes, okay. And so I am opposed to that because there are other things that the syringe services, uh, these program, projects offer other than exchanging needles that I think that we should allow our people to, our, our citizens to, to participate in. However, uh, the wording of it is a little concerning to me because it says, let's see, um, it should be unlawful and public nuisance for any person to create, establish, operate and conduct or participate in a syringe services program within the town of Loomis. And so my question is, does that mean that you cannot participate within the town of Loomis, or does that mean that you cannot participate in a syringe services program that is in the town of Loomis? May not participate, may not do the whole list of things in the town of Loomis. So all of those things, all of the above? So that means that if there is a... So if there's a service... If there is a syringe services program that is being offered outside the town? That would not apply. That would not apply. What if it was outside the town but offering mail-in type things? That would apply for people inside the town of Loomis, right? It would apply. Even if they wanted to get, say, drug, uh, rehabilitation services, they couldn't do that to syringe services programs by, if they wanted to do, if they wanted to get information on that, but... Uh, well, it's a pretty theoretical conversation because much of that information would be available online. Right. So I don't know exactly what would be... Or let's say that they had a, let's say that there was a service that was in Rockford, and they would send out people to help. That is what was proposed in the town, but they would be based in the town of Loomis but come to Loomis to provide... Let's say they, let's say they don't even want needles, they just want someone to come out and talk to them about how they could get better, how they can rehabilitate themselves. We are currently banning that. We are banning the defined term, which is a syringe service program, as that term is defined. But the really council is called. And I, I, I know what, I know the point that you made, you made it last month, well, it's up to the council. Right. You could carve out language that would make an exception for other services than syringe exchange. I would very much appreciate that. But that's... If we could make it say something where we are disallowing the syringe services, the needle exchange portion of it, but allow other components of a syringe services program to, for our citizens to participate, I think that that is a service that we want them to have access. Not necessarily the needle exchange part, but the sex education, drug education, drug rehabilitation, uh, all of those other things. I feel like that's something that the, that we should want our community to, to have access to.
I remember your comment last meeting, and it was about the definition in the ordinance where it stated the services provided, one was the Needle Exchange Program, that's the contentious service, but then, it offered other services, and so I believe the comment you made was, so you're against healthcare, because by enacting this ordinance in the effort to keep a needle exchange program from, uh, operating with inside the Loomis boundary, the town boundary, then thereby you would be excluding the others. That's upon that organization. If they choose to arrange their services where they provide other healthcare, um, services such as counseling and whatnot, right? But they want to also include their needle exchange, then that's on them. They could reorganize themselves so that they don't have the Needle Exchange Program and have all those other services, or another organization who just have those services and not the Needle Exchange, and that would be perfectly fine.
But they can't...
So it's really upon them to, uh, arrange their, their, their business or their, the thrust of the services they choose to offer. So we aren't banning healthcare at all. But, and we didn't make that definition, but what we are focusing on is the Needle Exchange Program, uh, and it's highly unpopular.
I remember having this conversation last month also, and I, and I addressed the fact that I had nothing to do... that I had nothing to do with medical services. Um, of course, people will be allowed to seek medical care or drug rehabilitation. There are plenty of services available for that. This is an, this is language trying to make sure that there's no wiggle room for them to come and have that kind of business in our town, as far as the needle exchange program. But we are not banning medical services. And it, and if it has something to do, um, like, I know that there would have been a question maybe about diabetics, whatever, no, no medical services are, even according to the, because I talked to the county myself also. So, I mean, if the rest of the council wants to make a change to the verbiage, I'm not going to argue about it, but I, I really want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, that we are not going to allow that in Placer County or Loomis. And I, I, I am comfortable with the verbiage like we talked before, but I'll defer to the rest of the council on that. But I, it does not, it does not eliminate healthcare.
I have a question too. I'm kind of piggybacking on what she said, and what you mentioned. I just want to get clarification. So you mentioned, and I'm just merely asking the context of the words used. Can you mention sex education? And are you referring to educating people on AIDS and the process? Or are you referring to, because that could be left open to interpretation, or that could be in other programs? And I'm sure the parents of the town of Loomis would want to know if their kids would go into it. So I'm just bringing that up. So can you clarify that a little better? If you're talking about the AIDS epidemic, when transferring needles? Are you talking merely about things that parents would want, uh, you, you sort of wrong that?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm trying to delegate by asking, and I just have.
So, state law, it says that they are required, so all of these organizations that offer needle exchanges have to also offer, among, among other things, the, the one that specifically you're asking about, says "services related to provision of education and materials for the reduction of sexual risk behaviors, including but not limited to the distribution of condoms." And so, that's, it's, it's, it's a, it's more of a, it's not a sex education, it's a safe sex education, I, I misspoke.
Okay, so since you brought that up, I just want to clarify or ask everybody here, because we're talking about syringe needles. I can understand if it's like drug abuse, substance abuse, and those needles, feeling that heroin needles can transfer AIDS or hepatitis C, things like that. But what does, and I'm just asking, because I know that there are probably people in the town that need, are kind of startled by that. What does that have to do with the needles, sex education, in terms of, we're talking about needles, that, so I'm just asking, because I'm pretty sure that there'll be people in the town of Loomis' parents that would not be happy with there being sex, sex education without their consent. Yes, exactly, especially in what age would that be? Would that be, sorry, am I pronouncing it a little happy? Um, would that be it for adults, like our age? Would that be people under the age of 18? Um, does it specify? Because that's something that we need to consider as well, that I'm sure that not everybody's going to be happy with that being part of our language going forward.
That's the state's language. I, we have no control over it.
Right.
They are required to do that by the state. And so, it's, and again, it is a, it is programs that the, this syringe service provider has to, the needle exchange program also has to include, in order to have, in order to operate, by the state, it has to do.
So I guess what you're bringing up here, and I just want to clarify, because we're going to leave on this, is this like a trailer bill, basically, where you have budget bills, where there's little tiny bills that are hidden, that if we pass something or we don't pass something, this gets pushed through without the town of Loomis knowing about it? And is that?
Well, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's the best analogy, but what I would say is, the reason the ordinance was drafted the way it was, is because the, well, initially because the particular business that was in question was seeking to operate under a particular statute. So, in order to ensure that we, that we captured that business and businesses like it, operating under this particular statute, we needed to use the statutory definition. If we start tweaking the statutory definition, you may, you are concerned about folks being able to participate in the other kinds of services. That is something that could be looked at. But I think the conversation you're having tonight is, probably tonight is not the time to do that, because I think it's a little more nuanced than just taking out the word, like, taking out the word "participate." Um, I'm always leery, as an attorney, with making sort of changes on the fly that sound logical at the time, but may have unintended consequences. So my suggestion would be, if there's a consensus, if the council wants to have us take a look at these, my suggestion would be you adopt it, and direct staff and legal to come back to you at some point in the future with a report on whether there are modifications to the ordinance that would be appropriate, that could still capture the primary purpose, which is needle exchange, while, um, maybe removing the unintended consequences of prohibiting activities that the council thinks would be appropriate. But, I'm, I'm just suggesting that it's probably not best to try to do it this year. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I was literally gonna say that, about the unintended consequence. That's what I was trying to say, like, if we undo that, like, I want to make sure that there's no loopholes that we can get through. But, am I wrong? Does the school not do sex ed? Do they not pass out condoms in counseling offices if they, yeah, yes. So, I really don't know if that's an issue. It's my understanding that they, that they are, it was brought forward as a needle exchange program, because that is their main intent and focus. So that's really what we're trying to provide it, so.
I get, I get that, and I, I, I'm behind you with the needle exchange part, that they are required to offer these other things that I don't, I think that would benefit our community, and I don't think we should abandon them. But I, I agree with what Jeff is saying, is that it's, it's hard to do that. I was trying to reword it here, and I, I, even before, and I was like, I don't know how to do it, but it would be good to, I, I would, I would appreciate it if you would allow Jeff to look into this a little more, and see if he can reword it in a slightly better way. I'm not, I'm, I'm, you, you all, as y'all, yeah, can do that. It would, it would allow.
Now you're talking my language.
Yeah.
I heard some country vernacular. So David, you know that we can always amend this ordinance in the future?
I can, yeah, I do.
It's a, okay, so.
But, and I think that if, if we just say we can amend it in the future, and then with no direction, then it will never happen. But I think if we say, it would be nice to, you know, can we look into this more and bring it back in the future, within six months? Or, you know, that would be great.
Yeah, that, that, that's reasonable. You know, one, one thought I had, and, or I should say a concern, is that, um, you know, as Jeff said, California created a statute, which was the, and, and within that statute, the, the definition of needle exchange was established, right? That wasn't us, that wasn't people in the audience, that was them. So, by, um, like you said, trying to tweak it, if we were to pass an ordinance that was tweaked, it could be argued that our ordinance doesn't relate directly or in substantially to their definition, so therefore it doesn't apply. So we don't, didn't achieve what the, the goal was, so. But, I think the recommended action tonight would be to approve the, um, the ordinance, and along with the sequel component, that is not a, a sequel impact. And then, we can come back later and discuss some of the particulars about the other services. I, I think that's reasonable. Um, but it just makes me wonder, why did the crazy California legislature define the needle exchange program as such? You know, with all of those services? So it makes me wonder what kind of backdoor opportunity, because, you know, one thing, when you look at a law, and you're analyzing it, the question is, for non-compliance, where's the teeth? And so, you know, here, we don't have it as defined. I, I'm assuming that we can then, um, we can then pull their use permit, if they were operating in town. If, so let's say we didn't have, no, that wouldn't work, because, scratch that thought, because they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be operating in town, so there would be no use permit issue. Alright, scratch that. Um, okay, I'm going to abandon that thought.
I'm, I'm okay. Let me, if I could just offer one, just a sort of an observation. We're using the term "needle exchange." The term "needle exchange," I don't know if that's actually defined anywhere in California law. So if, for example, we were to say, let's just have an ordinance that bans needle exchange, I would then want to find a definition of needle exchange that would capture all the kinds of services that we're talking about. And we may not be able to find one, because the statute uses the term "syringe services." Right, so, okay, is syringe service the same as needle exchange?
Okay.
So that's why, that's why I think a little bit of looking into it could be appropriate to see.
Because what, what if we modify the ordinance to reflect word-for-word "syringe service," rather than "needle exchange"? That way, there could be no argument as to what you're referring to.
It is, it is syringe services in our ordinance. I, I think that the, I, I'm, I am okay with, so, since I'm the only one who seems to have problems, I am okay with, uh, passing it as is, and the sequel, and directing staff to look into it a little further, to see if there's anything else that can be done.
Sure. Alright then. So with that.
So I would like to make a motion then.
Well, I think, do we need to open up the public comment?
We did that already. We did that already.
Okay.
Did you do it at the beginning? We did, we did it, we did it before we started talking.
We started talking.
Yeah, we did that. I mean, I'm totally fine with it. I'm totally fine with the, with, with having public comment.
We just did it already. I'm lo, I lost track whether I did it or not.
I just have one comment. I think we should just ban it, because if you, if you ban the needle, and then you leave everything else in there, I think we're opening up the door, so where if we want everything else, they're going to shove the needle thing down our throats. So if, if you want these other good services, you have to do the needle thing. I think we should just, just say no. That would be my, just say no, everything's not.
Jean Wilson and I agree with, with David, and I would, I would agree with a motion to, um, pass it, as is tonight, but direct, uh, staff to, and Jeff, to look into the possibilities, whether it's practical or not, to have some other reference to other kinds of services, that may or may not be available otherwise. And we can make all kinds of speculation, but I don't know to what extent other kinds of services are readily available. I don't know anything about this organization. I do know that we do not want the syringe or needle exchange. Thank you.
We have any further public comment? Nothing on Zoom, Carol? Okay, I think we'll close public comment for the second time. Because two is good. Um, so now, do I have a motion to adopt the recommended action?
I'm up to adopt.
David, you want to jump in on this?
I, I, with the, is that adoption only of what's given, or is that with the recommendation?
It's the recommended action.
Yeah, because that's.
To adopt the ordinance, and then, and within that, it determines that's not.
I will second it. If it's, if it's how it's written right now, I will second it.
Yes, that's, that's what the recommended action is.
I would very much appreciate the addition of adding the recommendation to the town staff to also look into.
Well, we could direct town staff to do that anytime.
Do you mean, that doesn't have to be part of the motion? Alright, then we do it.
Okay, so then, Carol, we have a, a motion in a second.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye. So now, let's, let's have a consensus. Would we like to look at the language of this further, to fine tune it? I'm looking all around, because this, this is a consensus.
Oh, okay.
This is for directing staff. I know, David, you're on board?
I am.
Girls?
Do you want to go first before I, I say what I, I have to say about it?
I'd like to go with this, but I'm not.
Well, we're, it's just a discussion, there's no, um, there's no finality to it, we're, because I have concerns too. And so, but I, I'm not opposed to a discussion with staff.
I'm not opposed to a discussion.
Okay.
You want to direct staff too?
Right.
I, this is going to be one of those where, um, I'm going to be the, is it the expression to drop with the bone? I don't think it's a good idea. I think the way we have it set right now, there is no environmental impact.
Right.
It's cut and dry. When you start, and maybe this is from my experience of working with capital analyzing legislation, and you start opening up bills, and you do a discussion, a lot of loopholes end up coming out, and it's like opening a chain of rooms. Um, I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to you guys looking at it from a legal standpoint, of course, but I don't think we should go to keep our leaves on this, because there are some things that were mentioned, that David did mention, um, that I don't necessarily think.
I'm concerned with weakening it, that's my concern. But I'm up for any discussion. I won't say that I will agree with it at the end, but I am open for a discussion.
And we can just, I, me too, but I would rather not, but if you guys want to, I'm willing to talk about it.
Okay. So, then, let's direct staff to look at this, and we can continue at a later time to address our concerns about the language. Now we'll move to committee, council committee reports, and I think I started on that in last time, so we'll start on this end. Amanda?
We have had a few subcommittees for the economic development, um, and they've been moving forward and sending out, um, we're actually going to be sending out emails to people like for Ag, and to get their input on how, um, they would like some grants, if we were to actually win those grants, um, how they would like to see that dispersed, and, and how would it be effective for our community. So we'll be looking for that. I'll probably be sending it out to the chamber, and, um, a few other, um, if you have any ideas of who I should send those to, please do that. Um, but other than that, we just, we had the, the Lee conference, um, so we really hadn't done a lot, other than that, but, that's it.
Okay, Steph?
Um, first and foremost, obviously, we had the convention, and it was a lot of fun and good to go, early and team building kind of aspect, um, even with staff.
What convention was it?
Oh, the Cal State's convention.
Yes.
Yes. Um, so I want to mention that that was a great opportunity for us all to, um, do some team building, get to know each other, and go to some pretty good workshops. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the Hoots speech one, that did sound very fascinating. Um, then, um, SP Mud, we have our, um, quite if I'm mistaken, Amanda, um, I believe it's November 9th, we have the two-by-two. So, uh, Councilwoman Nysley and I will be, uh, attending that with, um, Director Doki and Williams. Um, that's kind of where that's at with SP Mud. Um, and then, um, I'm very excited and happy to see that the Public Safety Committee is, um, starting, and we have two members that I think, it'll be a good opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with all of public safety, including, you know, the fire department, and Placer County Sheriff, and anybody else who's interested, including the public. Um, I wanted to say that too, if there's anybody in the public that wants to attend and be part of that, it is a public committee, just like anything else, so I, um, empower you that if you, um, are interested in public safety to attend, we're not saying we cannot. Um, so, um, again, I'm very excited about the Public Safety Committee starting, and I'm looking forward to that, and, um, I will, um, close with that.
Okay, I have nothing to report. Jenny?
Tomorrow, the afternoon meeting, and after the meeting, the special meeting, to consider policies of protection, because, and one of the first, I'm going to speak to, um, the full party, when we can do, get, there to, build fire, and use the seven, and education of the community, and, so, I, I have, I'm, I'm. So, I just, I have, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to that meeting tomorrow.
Okay, David?
Uh, so the countywide homelessness task force, uh, that I am a member of, they have, uh, they're not shutting down, but they've ended participation with the, the committee essentially that I was always closing. Um, they're opening up a new committee, which is mostly, um, going to be people in the health department of the local jurisdictions, and we don't have a health department, so we kind of lose our voice on that, but, uh, we also, I don't think we have a huge homelessness problem, so it's not, it wasn't a big issue. Um, there were people who brought up the fact that there, there weren't going to be any elected members of the committee. It was mostly just, uh, staff. However, the way that they were describing the committee, it was more like they were implementing policy and not creating policy, and so it didn't seem like having elected people on it was even going to be of a benefit.
Hmm.
And so that one's, that one's shutting down. Um, flood didn't meet, air pollution meets this week later, so I haven't hit that. But I did want to comment on the League of, of, uh, Cal Cities Conference that we went to. Um, it was, I'm gonna say, it was fun. Like, I enjoyed it. Like, it was, it was a good time, and, uh, it was, there was a lot of sessions that, um, some were formative, some were less so, but, uh, you know, all in all, the team building aspect of it was, was excellent. I just wanna say thank you to all of you for, you know, hanging out with me. And that's it.
Okay. I closed last meeting with a country saying that my family would say, and got another one for you this time. So this is a saying that it was, it's a saying of encouragement to someone who is, um, expressing some self-doubt over a daunting task. And the saying goes like this, ain't no hill for a stepper. Get on with it. So, with that, meeting adjourned.